And we will be starting with Councilmember Kern.
Oh, oh, public.
Before, before.
Did you close the public hearing?
Yeah, and just one point of note for anyone who is here for item number 28. Item number 28 has been pulled from the agenda, so just to let you know, item number 28 is not going to be heard tonight. Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions that came up during this public thing. The two-car garage issue, are those standard sizes? They said they won't fit a two-car garage. The two-car garage is a two-car garage, right?
Councilmember Kern, as designed, the garage dimensions comply with the city's requirements.
Okay. Then the other one was, and I think it was an email I received today, that the 2,700-square-foot units are going to be decreased to 2,500 square feet, or if they remain 2,700 square feet, there'll be another garage space.
That's correct, Councilmember Kern. A condition of approval was added, condition number 109, that requires the design to either be habitable space to reduce to less than 2,500 square feet, or to the design to be modified so there's an additional third space.
So if the applicant's here, can you answer the question of what you're going to do, whether to increase the garage space, or are you going to decrease the size of the living space?
Councilman Kern, thank you. We're going to decrease the size of the home and keep it a two-car garage.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that's on the record, people understand what's going to happen there. That's fine. Thanks. You know, one of the things that, you know, I've been through several of these hearings over the years, and the thing is, I realize that people do not like projects in their neighborhood. I mean, the idea that, to go back to what Ms. Johnson said about Melrose Heights, if she remembers at that meeting, I said I was disappointed that we didn't add more housing at Melrose Heights, that we should have put more in. But they responded to the neighborhood and kept the housing below what they could have put in. I find that people that have housing don't want any more housing. We have a lot of people here tonight that are very concerned about homelessness. Well, one of the ways to get out of homelessness is to build more housing across the board.[144.26][144.26](Laughter).
At this point, please let the council member finish.
You know, I sit here quietly and I listen to everybody's concerns. I don't make fun of them, I don't jeer them, I don't have any of those comments, you know, the idea that we should respect everybody's opinion, and I do. So the one thing here, you know, we are under state mandates that this actually follows into, and I'll tell you right now, it's going to get worse. The state is coming down with more and more housing mandates that these won't even be public hearings anymore. These will be administrative permits because the state's going to dictate how we build housing in our local area. So this is probably one of the last few opportunities we have, have public hearings about housing, because I bet within four to five years, these will be ministerial hearings about housing, and a lot of times don't even make it to Planning Commission because they will be administrative. So we are under the state rule because the state legislature have taken it upon themselves to design housing in California and have taken away local control. And that's part of the reason that we have some of these issues here tonight. So, yes, do we need housing? Yes. We do not solve homelessness, we do not solve the housing crisis without building housing. And I understand that people that have housing don't want any more housing. All the hearings I've been through in the last 12 years, that is a true fact. The people that have housing don't want any more housing near them. Ms. Bachmann brought up this thing about Oceanside Boulevard. You can bet dollars to doughnuts, if we had a proposal like she showed, a density on housing, density along Oceanside Boulevard, we would have the same number of people, if not more, in this chamber protesting the housing along Oceanside Boulevard. I've been there, I've heard that, the same thing, we need housing but build it someplace else. We need housing, and we need to build it. So I'm going to move staff recommendation, adopt the final negative declaration and associated mitigation, and adopt the resolution granting the appeal of the Planning Commission's denial. That's my motion.
Deputy Mayor Lowry?
Who has an overview of the property? The image that we can see?
Just the site plan, or would you like an aerial?
Not the site plan, the area. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so, we can work with that? Or something like that? Or maybe that? That's better. Okay, thank you. And can you show me where on that property there are macadamia trees, or even dead macadamia trees?
To my knowledge, Councilman Lowry, there are no macadamia trees on that particular project site.
Why are we talking about macadamia trees?
I think because the project next door used to be a macadamia grove, and there's some confusion about where that macadamia grove was.
Okay, so the project next door, that probably still has, or the property next door still has some macadamia trees on it?
I'm not familiar that it has macadamia trees, but it is called Macadamia Grove.
Okay, that's great. Sure.
The whole project was a blond lady named Lola Boots. She brought in in 1945, USC brought in the first macadamia trees from Hawaii, and they set up the grove on that site. Her house was, the old Spanish one sits on Grand View. The caretakers, the ranchers, were in those houses that are in the back where, you know, they were proposing their development. There were 117-some macadamias when I came in, bought the property. The city had required, I keep 27 of them, box them and move around because they considered this was the first commercial macadamia grove in the state of California, and it had historical value. The city so deemed it to me that I had to do this at considerable cost, which I did. So that whole property, what they're doing, the house, Lola Boots' house and the new houses behind her, was all part of the macadamia grove development and transfer.
So where this property is now, that's in the image, that at some time, that was also macadamias?
That was all part of the macadamia. I don't know if they had trees on that one.
Yeah.
But that was the growers' house, and that's where they, the ranch house, took care of it, Lola Boots, the Spanish house.
Okay, that's good, thank you. Okay, that's all I needed to know, thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. First, I have to give a disclosure during the break. I did have a very brief conversation with a member of the public, Ms. Janet Lacy, and she did ask me to ask a question with respect to the 96 parking spaces, so I'll start with that, and that is, how did you come up with 96? It doesn't seem to be 96 on the, in the project. Where are the 96? Do you have an illustration that shows all 96 that you could put up on the board?
Mayor and council members, we would direct that question to the applicant who made the statement about 96 spaces.
In other words, you believe it's less than 96?
Sergio Madero's a project planner, is trying to get some information up, and he'll answer your question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sanchez. The parking spaces are, there's two in every garage, so there are, there's that, and then there's the driveway spots that can accommodate cars, and then, which is most of them, and then there's also the slot parking spaces that you can see interspersed around the project. It's, I can't, for instance, if you look at the entryway to the project, there's three when you pull in, although one of those is dedicated for the mail carrier, and then in various other spots, there are head-in slot parking spaces, for instance, in between units. In between units 22 and 23, between 20 and 21, and between 18 and 19. And when you add all those up, the number comes out, you know, to 96. And any way you slice it, it's a heck of a lot more than what's required by city code, which is 52.
Staff?
Councilmember Sanchez, for the record, staff, when staff analyze this, we don't count driveway spaces. The code doesn't allow us to count driveway spaces.
Yeah.
But there are available parking in excess of what the code requires. So the code requires two spaces for each single-family residence under 2,500 square feet, and so they complied with that requirement. In addition, there's 12 additional parking spaces dispersed throughout the project site for a total of 68 official parking spaces.
68 versus the 96, right? You said official?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I do take note on, or objection to, I guess, the applicant's statement that they didn't have to lean on the density bonus to be able to get these 30 homes, because but for the density bonus laws, we would really only be talking about seven. Because as we know, if there wasn't a density bonus laws, it would have to be consistent with the community, and the density is from 7 to 22, and I imagine the community would have probably leaned more towards seven, and possibly maybe a few more by, you know, recommendation by staff, but certainly not this high-density project that doesn't look to connect to anything having to do with Fire Mountain. I heard St. Malo, I don't really think of St. Malo as, you know, it's really with the rest of Fire Mountain, which tend to be large, large lots. And I also object to comment that we need more homes in Oceanside. Oceanside has been described in an independent study that was done for the SOAR initiative. We were described as a bedroom community. We have the lowest jobs-to-residence ratio in the entire county, and one of the reasons that we're more of a bedroom community is because many of our industrial and commercially-zoned lands have been changed to high-density residential, many during the times that I've been on the council. I mean, we're talking tens of acres, and maybe even, well, actually, it's probably more like hundreds of acres. So we need more commercial and industrial, we don't need more housing. City of Oceanside has really done its fair share in terms of housing. Yes, we can get, be, reach our state housing goals that are imposed on us because we have infill, and we have that until something like 2050. I think that independent study also indicated that by 2050, we would need more land for industrial, because we need more jobs, we need more commerce and industry in Oceanside. I do also take objection to the Sandag raising the regional numbers, and our representative, who's Mr. Lowry, agreeing to that, because I don't believe that the state should be doing that. I don't think that the state should be imposing this density bonus that obviously doesn't take into account our needs as a city, our needs for more commerce and industry, for more jobs, to be able to be self-sufficient. We cannot be a bedroom community. If we are, become truly a bedroom community, we will not be able to afford our own police and fire departments. We'll have to contract out for services, and none of us, certainly I don't want that to happen. So as to this project, the only reason why we're here is because, in looking at this project and having seven people on the commission voting it down, is because of the density bonus, supposedly to be able to get affordable housing. Under regular, if it was 26, 28, or even 20, anything above 20 would require 10 percent. So they're not even doing enough affordable housing. This whole density law doesn't even make sense. So with respect to the, to being back here again, you know, I applaud the developer for making the affordable housing units, the two, the only two, to look exactly like the rest of the projects. I think that that should always be what we do. This affordability designation is only for, what is it, 55 years, not 50? 55 years, and after that, it's a market rate. I would like to incorporate my comments from before, which is that I feel that we ought to turn this down based on public safety issues. There's no doubt in my mind, I've driven up there, and I've been around the schools, especially since they're doing all these really great zero-waste projects, these kids, the teachers in the area, the elementary school, the middle school, they're doing really fantastic things, and it keeps its real character. That's why it doesn't have sidewalks, right? Because the idea of maintaining the character of the community. But it doesn't match with what's happening now, which is a lot of traffic, and it's crazy that the amount of traffic and the speed, and I do feel that it is a public safety problem. So, and we are, I believe we're putting our children, our youth, our parents, drivers at risk, walkers, pedestrians at risk, bicycle riders at risk. So I cannot, with any due conscience, move to approve this. I do still feel, and I again incorporate my comments from the first hearing, that this is a very, very critical, the public safety issues, and that is why this project should be denied. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller?
I'll second the motion. I would like to know if we have the rents on the houses that are there?
Councilmember Feller, defer that question to the applicant?
Yes.
Hey, Councilman Feller, I do have the numbers from the property owner who rents those homes. The house that's 1902 Grand View Street is a home, I think there's also a guest home. That's why you hear some people saying there's two homes there. It's actually, I think, one legal home, but there's, what it boils down to is there's, it's a three-bedroom, three-bath house, and the rent he's collecting is $3,550 per month.
That's low income?
No.
Okay.
That's the one, and the house, that's the small house that's out on the street, is a two-bedroom, one-bath house. He receives $1,820 per month. The two very low-income restricted homes, I don't have the exact number because it's based on a complex formula, but I understand that it's going to be maxed out at somewhere between $800 and $900 per month total, that the occupant of those homes will be obligated to pay while they live there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to see the street improvements programmed, so if we can add that to the capital improvement project going forward, I think that it is a fairly busy street, but it's also, there are many times in the day when nobody's going up and down the street. I've, when I lived in Fire Mountain on Avocado, my wife walked quite a bit out on the streets, and it was never too unsafe. She walked against traffic, of course, but I was puzzled why we didn't have sidewalks up there, and it's because nobody up there wanted them. So, you know, I think, I believe that we should try to improve what we can as far as the public safety on Grand View, and, you know, look into if somebody is complaining about the streets or the parking. I am a little worried about, one of the people said the drainage was going to be affected, and it'd be the same old thing, so I do, maybe you could answer that question? What drainage comes off the street there, and where it will go?
Councilmember Feller, the project, as proposed, would make improvements to Grand View Street along its project frontage. That would include a small drainage facility to accept drainage from the newly improved section, segment of Grand View Street, in addition to capturing its own drainage in a common facility within the project site. It's not making improvements to all of Grand View Street, only along its project frontage.
Well, I was wondering about where, because it is kind of at a low point where you're going into the project, coming from both directions, so how is that going to be affected by the water running? So maybe the developer could...
Councilman Feller, so I'm going to introduce to you Ryan Waffle, who was our civil engineer for the project.
Okay.
And what he'll point out to you is there's, you can't see it on this site plan, but you can see one of them, there's two large bio-retention basins, one that's at the head of the project.
Oh.
There, and then there's another one that is not pictured on that drawing, but that road between Homes 7 and 8 is an access way down to a very large bio-retention basin. That's the extent of my ability to describe how this has been engineered, but I'll let Mr. Waffle take over.
I thought he was your bodyguard.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. My name's Ryan Waffle, I work with Pascal Loret, Suter &amp; Associates, we're the civil engineering firm on this project. Been designing the project for a little over three years now, worked well with staff. Basically, we have, along our frontage, we're going to be widening it, installing a curb gutter and sidewalk. Part of that aspect would be installing a curb inlet, which would pick up the flows from our side of the street, run them down into the ravine, the natural drainage ditch that is, I guess, on the east side of the property. So at the end of the day, the condition will be better. Can't say it'd be great, because the true low point of the street is on the other side of the street, which would require, you know, right-of-way work, potentially even some property exchange, but this development will better the condition as it states today.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all the questions I had.
Deputy Mayor Lowry?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to explain a little bit about the state of California that we're not very happy about, and that is, the state comes up every so often with the Housing Needs Assessment numbers, and the state pushes it out to all the different communities, and we have to work out a deal with them to say, we don't want to build that many, we'll do, we'll allow this many. And what's happened this year is the state came out with these outrageous numbers, and I am on the Board of Sandag, and I did think long and hard about these two numbers. One number was 116,000, the other number was 171,000 homes to be built, allowed to be built in the next 10 years in the entire county. The state is now not going to negotiate with us, so our choice as a regional board, which is not this one, but the Sandag Board, is to either pick the lower number or pick the higher number, and I voted, as I mentioned, for the lower number, and then between that time and a few weeks later, when it came back for a second discussion and a second vote, I had been, I had met with or discussed that with a number of nonprofit organizations whose mission is to have more housing for people who need it, and that would include people who've graduated from college but aren't making $250,000 a year, might have real jobs, they need housing, and maybe our kids need housing and all that. None of that matters to this discussion, but in the context of the state telling us what we have to do, I changed my mind about these numbers from the 116,000 to 171,000, and since then have met with staff, some of whom are here tonight, to discuss what that really means to the city of Oceanside. So staff's opinion is that the city, that the state is not going to let us get away with not building some relative number of housing units that they're requiring that we build, but that because we have built a lot of housing already, and we can demonstrate that this housing is in place, and that it is accommodating some number of people, we can demonstrate that that number of homes, some number, has to go somewhere else that we can't build it in Oceanside, it might be forced to go to Carlsbad, Vista Escandito, Imperial Beach, who knows where. So that's what the Sandag has to work out. Sandag has to work out how we're going to split up all these 171,000 homes over the entire county. This is, we are literally out in the weeds here on this, because when Councilmember Kern mentioned that a while ago, everybody started yelling that that was, we don't want that, or whatever. The state is the agency in charge of the numbers that they give to us. We can push back, but we don't have millions of dollars to take them to court. So I oppose this project because of the traffic and safety considerations, but we can only oppose them for so long, then the state's going to come down, they're going to force us. And people don't understand that we get a lot of money from the state of California to function as a municipality, and if we don't function within their laws, they're not going to be very happy giving us money that's our share of the pie. So we have to consider that when we make decisions here as a city council. At this point, we still have the option of making some decisions, but if they come down and say, you got to build some outrageous number of homes, we're going to have to do that. There's no fighting back with them, but we can still have meetings like this, and y'all can still come and yell at us for making those decisions. But anyway, tonight, I'm going to vote to oppose this project because I believe it is a safety hazard. I actually did meet the woman who owned the home there about 20 years ago, and she was very proud of her macadamia trees. I didn't know what to do with them, she gave me a bag, and it's like, what do I do with these? It's like cracking rocks to get to the nuts that were in them. But anyway, I think this is important in terms of how it fits in with the community in general, and I believe that that's, we still are able to make some decisions on our own, so I'm going to oppose this. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yeah, I just want to say, we're not required to actually build, because obviously the city of Oceanside does not have the money to be able to build housing. The requirements are for 10 percent either onsite, which is, this is not doing 10 percent, that would be three homes, or 10 percent in loofis. So bottom line is, we're not, we're not ordered to do it because we can't, we don't have the money. It is to, to ensure that we have enough land to build, and we do have that. The staff tells us that, our independent study told us that. Why, what I object to, not because of the state telling us what to do, is that a representative would do this, vote this way, without giving us the opportunity to discuss it here on the dais and let the community make the public comments about how we're gonna do this. Shouldn't the city of Oceanside be the ones to decide how we're going to be able to build the housing that we need? So that is my objection. It's not, you know, I think procedurally, it should've come here and we should've been able to say, no. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller.
Thank you. How much do we get in, in loo fees, Marjorie, for the 10% that we were referring to?
So the in fee, in loo fees that we collect right now is $1,000 per development, plus $100 per unit, and $7.09 per square foot. So it depends on the size of the unit.
So how about an about, a about 10,000, about 8,000?
Hold on just a moment. Let's say that it's a 2,200 square foot house. We collect 15,598.
For, for three units?
For, well, that's based on square footage of like a 2,400.
45,000 for three units.
Yes, if they're at 2,200 square foot units.
Would that be the same as building two full houses for these people?
No.
Thank you.
I would like to say that I do believe that the project is not compatible with the broader Fire Mountain neighborhood. However, state law does not provide us the discretion to use that as a basis to deny the project. As Councilmember Kern said, the state density bonus law is going to, we are going to see more and more projects taking advantage of that with reduced and even very restricted, if not eliminated, discretion. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 3-2. Sanchez, Lowry now.
Go to 24.
So I know 24 we've already read through. We're actually at the point of hearing from staff. And you've already done disclosures.
Go ahead, Rob.
Good evening and honorable mayor and councilmembers. I'm Rob D. Mahouski, Associate Planner. I'm here this evening to present Tier One Ag Tourism Activities. This request is for a zone amendment and local coastal program amendment to introduce an ordinance, amending Articles 3, 4, 14, and 30 of the zoning ordinance, and establishing the amended text of Article 3, 4, and 30 as part of the implementation plan of the local coastal program for purposes of establishing ag tourism-related uses as permitted and facilitate Tier One agritourism activities as defined in the Agritourism Strategic Plan in the Southmore Hills area. Agritourism is defined as a form of commercial enterprise that links agriculture, production, and/or processing with tourism in order to attract farmers onto a farm ranch or other agricultural business for the purposes of entertaining and/or educating the visitors and generating income for the farm rancher business owner. In recent years, farming in Southmore Hills has faced challenges to economic viability, including increased cost of water and labor, regional competition, and state regulations. In an effort to keep farming viable, the city council held an ag tourism workshop in 2015 and authorized preparation of a agritourism strategic plan. The city council accepted the agricultural strategic plan in 2016, which identified a tier approach to implement ag tourism and authorized implementation of Tier One activities. Tier One activities focus on small-scale, low-intensity uses that don't require major infrastructure improvements, while Tier Two involves significant public and private capital expenditures. To begin implementation, the city contracted with Visit Oceanside to lead the, on tourism marketing and education. In, in partnership with the city, Visit Oceanside facilitated three agritourism workshops in 2017 to explore agritourism background, case studies, potential opportunities, regulations, business plans, and marketing. In November of 2017, the city council directed staff to initiate zone text amendments to facilitate Tier One agritourism activities as incidental sites primarily used for agricultural purposes. Staff reviewed existing agricultural zoning regulations and developed a draft Tier One Activities Matrix. Tier One activities focus on activities that do not involve significant capital investment, are secondary to primary agricultural use of a property, enhance economic viability of farming, and are compatible with commercial agricultural activities. The Tier One Activities Matrix addresses existing uses and primary requirements, agritourism uses and additional agricultural uses, defines ag tourism, and establishes agritourism use classifications. The draft matrix was developed from collaborative effort and public feedback received at the three workshops, consultation with farmers and local stakeholders, including the Southmore Hills Association, and guidance from the UC Davis Small Farmer Program, as well as research of other ag tourism efforts in the state. The draft matrix was released for public review in July, and a community workshop was held to introduce the, the matrix as well. The proposed matrix is provided as attachment to the staff report. The Tier Activities Matrix identifies all proposed agritourism and agricultural activities, as well as the proposed permit type for each use. Permanent requirements are based on the type and intensity of use and are designated as by right, ministerial, administrative, or discretionary. By right is essentially no city permit is required under a business license. A ministerial permit is a permit that shall be issued if a project complies with all zoning requirements. Administrative is a permit approved by the city planner with no public hearing required unless it is appealed. And a discretionary action is typically approved by the planning commission or requires consideration by the city council for certain cases. Primary requirements vary for uses based on thresholds such as property acreage, square footage of structures, or quantity. Higher intensity uses typically require an administrative or discretionary action to ensure compatibility with all regulatory requirements, compatibility with the surrounding properties, as well as ensuring uses are not detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. The matrix identifies all existing and proposed uses allowed in the agricultural zone. All new uses are identified in bold on the Activities Matrix. Each use is described in detail in the use classification provided on page four of the matrix. In the interest of time, I'll briefly highlight some of the proposed uses. Aviculture is, is the breeding and raising of poultry. Aquaculture is breeding and raising of fish, which includes aquaponics. Agricultural food and product processing includes the manufacturing or production of goods that are generally produced on the farmer ranch and can include incidental retail sale of those, those finished products. Research and development of ag products, beekeeping, composting, agricultural sale store, which allows the retail sale of directly to consumers of products produced on the premises or within the region. Seasonal attractions, agricultural homestays, which are similar to bed and breakfast, but allow up to six guest quarters and meals are allowed to be served, not only for breakfast, but at dinnertime as well for registered guests. Campgrounds, U-PIC operations, farm tours, petting zoos, commercial outdoor recreation, which should include a variety of activities such as archery, ziplining, similar activities. Farm breweries and farm distilleries would allow small-scale production of, of either beer or similar products or distilled spirits for primarily a product that is a key ingredient produced on the premises, but also products within the, the region. Retail nursery, farm-to-table, restaurants and cafes. Those would be cafes that could be accessory to a farmer ranch, where there could be a cafe as well as other products produced. That could include a cafe, a coffee shop, or a, a small restaurant. Agricultural supply services, cultural institutions, and finally, educational programs typically affiliated with, with school programs or universities. Staff is proposing zone text amendments to Article 3, 4, and 14, and 30 of the zoning ordinance to facilitate ag tourism. All changes are noted in bold, underlined, and striked out as attachments to the staff report. Amendments to Article 3 include the definition of ag tourism, the definition of farm or ranch, and a definition for domestic farm animals, which includes a broader category of, of domestic animals than currently defined under current code. Article 4 includes all new agritourism use classification and additional ag uses. And Article 30 is amended to make modifications to bed and breakfast, animal regulations, as well as agricultural sale stands to allow a larger minimum size for, for the sale stands. Article, the proposed amendments to Article 14 include agritourism land use classifications, modifications to existing use classifications to expand the agricultural or agritourism activities, modifications to development regulations to facilitate ag tourism activities, and modifications to the agricultural activities permit requirements to streamline the approval process of ag activities and to reduce regulatory barriers. The purpose of the zone text amendment is to introduce agritourism as permitted use in the zoning ordinance, establish Tier One activities and additional ag uses, establish permit requirements and development standards, and streamline permanent requirements for ag activities. Tier One uses were recommended based on uses secondary, primary agricultural functions of the property, compatible with agricultural activities, and that there are no significant impacts caused by the proposed activities. The proposed text amendments will also allow farmers and ranchers to participate in ag tourism activities that could potentially attract visitors to Southmore Hills and generate supplemental income for farms with the goal of keeping farming viable in Southmore Hills. The request was considered by both the Economic Development Commission and the Planning Commission. Both commissions unanimously recommended approval of the proposed text amendments. In conclusion, staff recommends that the city council by motion introduce an ordinance, amending Articles 3, 4, 14, and 30 of the zoning ordinance, and adopt a resolution establishing Articles 3, 4, and 30 of the comprehensive zoning ordinance as part of the implementation plan of the local coastal program to establish ag, agritourism-related uses as permitted and facilitate ag tourism activities as defined in the agritourism strategic plan in the Southmore Hills region. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
We do have public on the side, and I'll call you up two at a time. Firstly, we have Michael Kobos, followed by Louise Bauma.
Thank you, Rob, first of all, for your hard work and your hard work in the past for our area, the North Rivers Farm. Council, Mayor, my name is Michael Kobos. I'm at 1539 Sleeping Indian Road. And what I'd like to do is to take a step back here and give you a bit of a picture show of our agricultural region. San Luis Rey, you all know where that's at. It's in Bonzo. They had an unfortunate incident back when the fire in December evacuated everybody, and ourselves included, and they had a horrible incident there. The, right down the street from there is a, a new vineyard that's going in. And so that's one of the ways that they're moving forward with the area that's growing. We are an area in transition here. Moody Creek Vineyard there in Fallbrook has a large vineyard going in, which will also include a winery. This is, go ahead, honey. This is a large, large project that's going on right in our, our neck of the woods. This is, this is what I thought was a funny one when I went out taking pictures. This is the, for those of you who like to play golf, this is the Fallbrook Golf Club over on Gerd. And this is now overlooking the sixth fair, uh, sixth hallway, uh, fairway, which is now a massive vineyard and a winery that's gonna be going in. So as you can see, at one time, Fallbrook was a bit of the avocado capital. Not so much anymore. And so again, and I'll use this word again, we are in, in transition. So agritourism really fits the bill for us here. Go ahead. Southmore Hills, this is right up on top on Wilshire. And, and Sleeping Indian Road as we're moving down. Go ahead. There's growers out there, Armstrong growers. Go ahead, keep going. They've got a lot of stuff that they're, acres and acres that they're using, hired people. And we also have independent growers that are out there. Go ahead. And this is, happens to be my wife and I's, our, our vineyard. And go ahead. You also have seen, you all know Beach House Winery, award-winning Beach House Winery that's, in just a short amount of time, has produced some fine wines, as we all know. It's another picture of George and Kim's, go ahead. Moving down Sleeping Indian here, we're growing bell peppers. Go ahead. Now, this is a corner of, this is what North River Farms looks like right now. Go ahead. Go to the last one. And let's keep Oceanside farming. That's what the opposition to Y says. But this is their idea of keeping farming in Oceanside. And I'm not sure how that's keeping farming here. Go ahead, last one. Anyway, thank you for allowing me to run over. Just remember that we are an agricultural region, and I'm hoping we can stay that way. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. My name is Louise Bauma. I live in Southmore Hills also, 25 acres, avocados and nurseries. So very familiar with the Koboses, our neighbors, and appreciate them coming out tonight. I just wanna come out and just make it short and sweet. We've, we've started this journey years ago with the city of Oceanside. Esther over there was one of our biggest champions, Visit Oceanside, and, and our Southmore Hills Association. And together, we held workshops with the city where we gathered all of the community input, which we, we formulated into what you see tonight. So we're here tonight to ask your blessing, or I'm here tonight to ask your blessing, to hopefully vote in a positive way for agritourism and to move us forward. And I wanna thank our city staff, which I think is one of the finest city staffs I've ever worked with. And I've been working in the city as a community, I've been on Planning Commission and EDC. And this, I think you guys, we have the best city staff ever. So thanks to these guys, thanks to Visit Oceanside, and Les LeGall, and all of those guys that got behind us to actually bring agritourism together. And so I hope that we can have this as our first step to our Oceanside AgriVision Plan. And thank you very much. And this is the first thing, maybe for a while, that we've actually had a kumbaya here, where everyone kinda, I think, is in, is all behind it. So thank you very much.
Our next two speakers are Kimberly Murray and Chris Kagan.
Good evening. My name is Kim Murray. I live at 1534 Sleeping Indian Road. And my husband George and I own Beach House Winery. And it's amazing, a lot of you don't know the history behind us, but we met in 2007 with the city of with the city of Oceanside. Esther spearheaded the meetings, and she said, "What can we do to help you and bring wineries into Southmore Hills?" Well, we said, "Time and money." She goes, "Oh, hey, how about time?" So 11 years later, this is where we're at. We actually commercialized, bonded our winery and commercialized it in 2010. So it's been a long road, takes time. No, Napa wasn't built, you know, in five years, 10 years. So we really appreciate everything that the city staff has done for our area in Southmore Hills. It's a tremendous effort, and the zoning amendment changes to the language to incorporate agritourism activities, not just wineries, not breweries, but incorporating all kinds of agritourism areas to give opportunities for the farmers to gain additional revenue for their farms so that they can continue to farm and sustain their farming operations. So what I'd like to say is that with this tremendous accomplishment and with the city staff, Rob, you're awesome, and the Economic Development Committee, the Planning Committee, everyone has just been phenomenal. It's truly been years. So George and I ask that you unanimously approve the changes, the proposed changes to the agricultural zoning language. Again, thank you.
It's kind of late, so I try to keep this kind of quick. I'm Chris Kagan. I'm actually one of the candidates for the District Two election. This is partly a District Two issue. We do have the election in about a month, but the one thing I do like about this, it seems like the people of District Two, in District Two, is a supporter of this issue. It seems like we are keeping the businesses and the farms in the hands of the people who live in District Two, and I believe this is a better alternative to SOR, of the SOR Initiative. The one thing that I did wish is that, as we saw with the residential plan up there, there was a chance for the public to kind of see what could possibly happen. So I don't know if there's unintended consequences of the potential of this agritourism. I wish there was more public comments and opportunity to see what that plan could eventually be, but some of the things out there that we saw, being able to bring more wineries to the region, breweries, and, you know, Bed and Breakfast-type opportunities, those small business opportunities, is a good opportunity for District Two. It would have been great to be able to have this win for District Two or candidate once elected after the election, but thank you, everyone.
Our next two speakers are Dennis Martnik and Larry Balma.
Yes, my name is Dennis Martnik. I live at 1537 Sleeping Indian Road, and I'm a Measure Y or SOR Initiative supporter. The primary reason for Measure Y is to save the last 12% of Oceanside's open space in prime agricultural lands and prevent sprawl. Sprawl would result in higher-cost housing. The measure tonight before you should be supported, and it should be approved. It will encourage agriculture in our area and make it more feasible. It will also keep agricultural jobs and encourage more agritourism. So we ask that you support the measure tonight and vote for it.
Mayor, Council, my name is Larry Balma. I'm president of Southmore Hills Association, live at 745 Sleeping Indian Road. And the Southmore Hills Association formed an agritourism committee several years ago. I want to thank Council for allowing Visit Oceanside and the wonderful city staff to work with our vision. The awareness of saving our agricultural heritage also prompted City Council approval to bring recycled water to Southmore Hills farmers during this process. Thank you very much. City staff has worked for months to complete Tier One agritourism activities to be entered into the agricultural zoning ordinance. Tonight, we will go down in history as we approve these agritourism opportunities into reality as a step forward to help farming be sustainable in Oceanside. Thank you very much.
This is a public hearing item. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this specific item may come forward if you didn't turn in a form. Mayor Weiss?
Seeing none, I'll close and bring it back to the City Council. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I first thought about pushing agritourism in Oceanside when I was on the Coastal Commission, and I saw what other agricultural communities were doing to try to make farming sustainable over time, economically sustainable. So I think the world of Kim and George Murray, who really kind of were the pioneers of this. They had been, they started first buying grapes elsewhere, now they're growing their own grapes and wonderful wines. And, you know, I just remember every step that you guys took to build your wine tasting room, and, I mean, just everything. You were really pioneers, and I really especially appreciate the staff who worked with them to, like, this is a dream, and I know you guys working full-time jobs and yet, you know, pursuing this dream and really setting us in a direction that I am just so proud of. So it is a pleasure to be able to make this motion, which is to introduce the ordinance and adopt the resolutions. Thank you so much for your hard work in ensuring that farming will continue in Oceanside, that it will be sustainable over time. And however this, however, I feel very strongly that we do want farming to continue in Oceanside. It's very little that's left, and those that are involved, like, you know, Jason Marats coming in and saying, "I'm going to grow coffee," and farmers are the next rock stars, you know, all of that is just really putting us on the map, and thank you.
Councilmember Feller?
Thank you. I'm kind of curious how, did we just try to wrap all things together with Coastal Commission or the local coastal plan? Do we need, is this agritourism in Morel Hills part of our local coastal plan?
Mr. Feller and Councilmembers, the local coastal plan amendment is strictly for administrative reasons. There's no agricultural land in the coastal zone.
Thank you. I was wondering why this was, you're just trying to kill two birds with one stone here. I was reading some of the backup here, and in Article 14, it says would include new or refined agricultural uses such as composting. You know, we've, I don't know how that works going forward, but that is a use that probably won't be friendly to people that live out there. On your list of uses that you had under agritourism, you had the, on the screen here. I was looking, and some of those are pretty intense uses. Is this just getting the ducks in a row for Tier Two when you come forward? Because nothing in here says you could, I don't know how you could have a restaurant without infrastructure out there. And there were several other uses that I saw on your screen, Rob, so.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Feller, the uses were scaled based on the type of intensity. In the case of composting, if it's for onsite use and production, it's permitted, whereas if a, if material is being brought on from outside the area and within the region, it would require other administrative use permit or a conditional use permit. So the potential impacts could be evaluated on a case-by-case basis with that specific use permit. So if there was a case where the material was detrimental to surrounding properties or would generate a nuisance, that could be evaluated during the discretionary review process.
And about the restaurants, I mean, is, are you, is this a plan ahead? Like I said, get the ducks in a row for the next phase? Is that what? Because there were, there were a number of things listed that I saw that you don't have plumbing out there, other than, I mean, you have plumbing, but it goes to septic. Restaurant can operate on a septic tank.
Correct, and a similar, restaurants and cafes would be based on square footage. If a proposed cafe or restaurant is 1,500 square foot or less, it'd be an administrative process, whereas a larger restaurant could be evaluated through the use permit, and they would have to account for adequate water and sewer, or if it's on septic. There are provisions where a septic system could accommodate a commercial-type use such as a restaurant.
So you're, I guess what I'm getting at is infrastructure and the, how some of these things are going to be accomplished without infrastructure out there?
The intention of Tier One activities is activities that could be accommodated under current zoning, which would not involve significant infrastructure, so there wouldn't be the need for road widening. Uses would most likely be in a smaller setting where you would have a 1,500-square-foot cafe. There'd be minimal parking. It wouldn't generate a significant amount of traffic that would, if you had a much larger restaurant or a use that would, if you're generating significant traffic, that would potentially bump it up to a Tier Two activity, which would evaluate, have need to evaluate regional infrastructure at that point.
So I guess I'm, maybe I'm not getting my question across right, because in Tier One, it's kind of the baby step. We're taking steps to get into agritourism. And with that comes these uses that you put up, that I don't seem to understand from your explanation, how we're going to be able to put those uses out there unless they go through a pretty serious process to get connected to our sewer system. So, I mean, that's what I'm getting at, so.
Councilman Feller, maybe I'll jump in and see if I can answer your question here. So the way that the uses were actually scaled under the use chart, which was presented earlier, is essentially smaller-scale facilities would be allowed out there under their Tier One uses, generally through an administrative process, subject to, you know, staff review. Once you hit a certain threshold in terms of size, then it would trigger the need for discretionary action, such as a conditional use permit for a larger-type facility. So those larger facilities would have to go through discretionary use process. As part of that, of course, as we normally do, we would be looking at the infrastructure much more carefully. We did actually do quite a bit of research, as Rob alluded to, was, and sometimes people are surprised to hear this, but there is a fair amount of commercial activity that can be supported on a septic system, and we actually did that research to kind of figure out what that threshold was. So the numbers that you see in the chart are kind of reflective of that research that we did. Now, when we get on to the Tier Two activities, those are obviously going to be much, are going to require much more evaluation, because then you're getting into uses that'll certainly have wide-ranging infrastructure impacts out in the community, and certainly the existing infrastructure out there probably wouldn't support those activities, so we would need to do some additional planning in that regard.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out what's going to be the easiest way for the people that are dreaming about it, you know, the Beach House Winery and Balmas and the people that are actually really interested in serving in that way. I'm all for it. I just was kind of puzzled about the list, so I second the motion.
Councilmember Kern?
I thought Jack was going to ask him about giving away plastic straws. I just have one quick question. Rob, you mentioned expansion of domestic animals. What's allowed now, and what are you expanding it to?
Goats at Goat Hill.
Yeah, isn't goats already allowed?
Mayor and Councilmember Kern, under the current definition, animals are, domestic animals are basically horses, cows, and it doesn't define other animals that are, would be considered domestic, such as horses, donkeys, alpacas, mules, sheep, goats, hogs, or similar animals. So the intent was to expand the definition to include those broader category of animals to avoid any confusion or need for determination.
Okay. I just wanted to know, I just, you know, I have in my mind what a domesticated animal is, and then it would be nice to get some alpacas out there. You've got to be careful with those little critters. But anyway, thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. Oh, John needs to introduce the ordinance.
This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Oceanside amending Articles 3, 4, 14, and 30 of the zoning ordinance to facilitate agritourism land use classifications and development regulations.
Please vote.
Yes, Kathy Nikle left for the evening, so we'll go to item number 27, off-agenda comments. We have 17. Okay, so I'll call you four at a time. You can line up both podiums. First, we have Beverly Fuller, followed by Tris Carpenter, Tony Schroth, and Mark Sibellas.
It's cold in here. Hello, everybody. I'm Beverly Fuller. I live at 1948 Andrews Court on Fire Mountain, and I'm here because of the noise ordinance. We have 16 people on our cul-de-sac, and half of us are elderly and dying with cancer, heart, all kinds of issues, plus we have little children that are two to five years old. And I've had to call the police. They had nothing else to do but come and take care of the noise in the neighborhood. About every other week, we have a neighbor who's five doors down, and I have to close my, we have to close our bedroom windows to keep the noise out because it's so loud. They have the drums, they have the guitars, they're singing. They're having a good time. So I called the police because it was 9:30 in the evening, and we go to bed at 9 o'clock, as do the little children and the older people. So in Chapter 38.17, it specifies the noise prohibiting. Chapter 38.12, the sound limit is 50 decibels, and they can make that noise from 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. You guys, that's not nice. I'm sorry, I've been a nurse for 26 years, taking care of people. I was raised to be considerate of others, and this is not considerate. This is not nice at all. And I'm here to beg, borrow, steal, plead to have this changed from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., to 8:00 in the morning, to 9:00 at night. They can have their parties all they want, that would give them still a lot of time, but this is just really, really not nice. The code violation, we can call three times in 30 days. If you call the first time, they don't ask your name. The second time, they ask for your name. And thinking, okay, are you going to tell them? And thinking, okay, are you going to tell them who has called? Will there be retaliation? I just don't know. But this has got to stop. And if we have from eight in the, eight, eight in the morning, that's efficient, to nine at night, that's civil. So I'm asking for you to look into this and hopefully change this because this is just, it's just not nice. So I thank you, and I thank our police, too. You guys are good guys. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name's Tris Carpenter, and I work for the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees. It's the union usually called AFSMI. As you might know, MECO, the management employees of the City of Oceanside affiliated with AFSMI in the spring, and have been trying to negotiate a fair contract since May. MECO employees came to us because they've been falling behind. As the speakers that follow behind me tonight and more at the next meeting will explain in detail, the city has failed miserably to keep up with the cost of living here in San Diego County. This is particularly problematic for the MECO employees because they're the heart and soul of the city services you're all so proud of providing. They're the people who've worked their way up from the entry level jobs in this city, and many of them have decades of service to the city and its residents and bring years and years of expertise to the history, and history to the job. They love this city, and they love the job that they do, and they need to see some of this love back. My role in this is that I've been the chief negotiator for MECO in this effort, and I know you get an update on closed session from Mr. O'Brien and Ms. Rogers on these negotiations. But there's two sides to every negotiation, and you should know what we see. We see the Police Management Association receiving one percent increases in January twenty eighteen and another one percent in January twenty nineteen. And that's after doing better historically than any other union in this city. We see the units like FIRE receiving two point five percent cost of living increases in between twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, and now they're getting stipends that amount to a couple of thousand dollars a year. We see OCEA frontline employee, the, the frontline employees union had classifications that were updated to more competitive market rate in the MOU that settled last year and more positions recently in line with the marketplace. And we see the executive pay and the top, the, the pay that the top brass gets rising every year. Maybe it's not as a cost of living increase, but instead of reclassification or market rate adjustment. But mark my words, brass is doing pretty well. Some of those positions have gone up twenty, twenty-five, and even thirty-five percent. But MECO gets forgotten. How have they been treated? Over the past eight years, MECO employees have received a grand total of four point five percent increases. That's it. To put that in perspective, the administrative secretary pay since twenty-ten has gone up a grand total of one dollar an hour. We've proposed class and compensation studies. We've proposed cost of living increases, and we've, but the city won't even counter these proposals. It's a flat-out rejection. What we want is to be treated fairly. If you care about the city, if you care about the loyal employees of the city and the services they provide, I urge you to take, to change the position at the table. There needs to be some respect for the many years of hard work that these folks have done and that they have given to the city. Please instruct your negotiators to change their position at the table and show some respect to these, to these people that have worked so hard for you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Weiss, Deputy Mayor Lowry, members of the council. My name is Tony Schroth, and I also am an employee of AFSMI Council Thirty-Six here on behalf of the, of MECO. I'm here to talk to you today about how expensive it is to live in Oceanside and in the county of San Diego. You're, you're being given out a, a packet of information, which is based on what's called the self-sufficiency standard. This data was developed by Dr. Diana Purce at the University of Washington in the nineteen nineties. It's a budget-based measure of the real cost of living. Essentially, it defines the amount of income necessary for an individual to meet their own basic needs. In other words, to be self-sufficient, self-sufficient, hence the name. I've, I've put up, one of the, the pages up here of the, the packet that you're being distributed. There's some eye-popping numbers on there, so I encourage you to follow the methodology page on the back of the packet, kind of maybe at a later date, to check my numbers and make sure that these eye-popping numbers are correct because they are certainly large. Essentially, what these numbers show is that these dedicated employees that Mr. Carpenter just introduced aren't being paid enough to keep up with the cost of living in the county of San Diego. The jobs that they signed on ten, five, even a couple of years ago, the, the amount of money that they're being paid isn't keeping up with how much it costs to live. A three-bedroom apartment in San Diego County costs as much as a four-bedroom apartment used to. A two-bedroom apartment costs as much as a three-bedroom apartment used to, and so on and so forth. Excuse my sloppy handwriting there, but if you look at the, the, just purely at the, the increase in the, the cost of housing over the past five years, it amounts to an increase of thirty-seven point three eight percent. The other three categories of expenses that I included in the self-sufficiency standard are childcare, groceries, and transportation. Combined, these amount to an increase of six points two five percent over the past Obviously, housing is the main drive of, of this large increase, which in total amounts to, over the past five years, twenty-seven point zero two percent increase, just over five years. As Mr. Carpenter said, that four point five percent isn't quite keeping up. We've still got twenty-two point five to go. I encourage you to take these proposals for cost of living increases seriously. I encourage you to treat these MECO employees properly and hopefully give us some help at the bargaining table. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff, my name is Mark Sabelis. I've lived in Oceanside my entire life, and I've had the good fortune to work for the City of Oceanside almost thirty years. I'm currently your maintenance supervisor for Public Works Street Division, and I'm here to speak about the rejection of a job comparison study I requested through our union. Over the last few years, at the request of management, I've been asked to be more productive, take on more responsibilities while using fewer personnel. Just in roadways alone, I've been able to double, if not triple, the amount of repairs accomplished while taking on more projects. There needs to be compensation for the increase in ongoing responsibility and larger workloads in our position. Street repairs, we've grown to almost five hundred centerline miles, which I need to inspect annually, budget, and repair. Concrete repairs have grown to almost eight hundred miles. Curbs, sidewalks, I need to annually inspect those, budget, and then manage contractors for repairs. Flood maintenance, we have over a hundred channels. We inspect our bridge structures, there's about sixty of those. Thirty-five hundred drain structures, we have to have maintained annually and manage a contractor for that. I run your duty program. I manage an additional ten senior employees after hours in additional, in addition to the twelve full-time working staff I have. I'm on call twenty-four seven. I would like the inequity between our city and similar positions within our regional cities to be fairly evaluated. Outside agencies, City of Escondido, Poway, San Marcos, have multiple supervisors to do what I'm tasked. The city has been unwilling to objectively look at the scope of my responsibilities and has rejected my request for an unbiased job comparison study. My position is no lesser in value and has as much, if not more, responsibility than comparative positions. Thank you for your time.
Our next four speakers are Brian Forward, Drew Andrioff, James Hill, and Gene R. O'Neil, Jr.
MECO member, stand up, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Brian Forward, the city's parking enforcement and solid waste field maintenance supervisor. I'm also the president of MECO, your management union here in the city. I started working for the city over thirty years ago, and like a lot of employees in MECO, have worked my way through the ranks to the position that I am now. MECO represents your middle management classes, your critical analysts, admin, support staff, technical experts, and section heads. We liaison between department heads and those that we are charged to lead in our teams. We make this city work. But most of us are behind the scenes, so you don't know us. We make sure that the water turns on, that it's safe, and from that water, that the used stuff goes away and doesn't come back. That the city is kept clean for our residents and visitors, that our parks are top-notch, that special events and our recreation programs are second to none, that stormwater flows instead of floods, that fire apparatus and police cars run smoothly to save the day, that our city pools are open and staffed to be safe, that traffic signals and streetlights work is designed, that our beach and harbor are attractions to be proud of, that the streets and sidewalks are kept in good repair and that they're safe, that the city budgets are kept in line and on track, that homeowners and developers are given advice to complete their projects and to make, make sure that they're kept in line, that directors and chiefs keep their calendars and every other commitment, that revenue is collected and safety accounted for, and safely into the last dime, that rules are followed and violations affected to maintain compliance to the community standard, that citizen customers are given the absolute finest in customer service, and that all of our residents and visitors have their voice heard that, for that a responsive government attends to their concerns. So why are we here tonight? We are here tonight to make sure that we are heard because in the sequence of events during our negotiations, our message not be, must not be getting through to you. In short, the very group that works to make sure that the city runs without faltering has been treated unfairly by this employer. As you've heard, our negotiations have not been so by definition. You've seen tonight from Mr. Schroth, and as Mr. Carpenter indicated, MECO has only seen four and a half percent in the last eight years, and there's no discussion about an increase in base salaries at all in the city's proposal. We brought factual data of how far we've fallen behind, yet there's still no discussion on how to keep up with the local economy. There are members here who are working far beyond their class. If you've heard a bit tonight, and will hear again in more detail in two weeks, yet the city will not even agree to look at those positions, except outside of the MOU, and even then, with no guarantee that, that anything will be done about it. So many of us have given and given to this fine city, and all we are asking for is simple acknowledgement by helping members keep up with the exorbitant cost of living within commuting distance to the city of Oceanside, and that those working out of class are fairly compensated. The continuing cry from the city is there isn't enough money. At the same time we hear that, we see employees and consultants added to their roles while we incredulously point to wasted money and lost opportunity. We will be looking further into these issues and will be happy to share our findings with council as they're unveiled. In conclusion, we are not going to let up on this wage issue until a fair offer is brought to the table, and these deserving employees are given the fair market evaluation and compensation commensurate with the value they bring to this organization. Mr. Carpenter is right. Show some love for once. What are you afraid of? Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I have some things I want to say, but first I'd like to address what we just saw. I spoke with Esther Sanchez before the meeting tonight, and she told me that the homeless in Oceanside is costing about five million dollars. We just heard tonight that we're going to allocate another sixty-six thousand dollars to fund this, the winter program, and yet we can't get our city staff a cost of living increase? That's, that's absolutely unacceptable. You guys need to take care of our union here. This is the backbone of our city, along with our Oceanside Police and our Fire Department. Let's, let's get them settled. My name's Drew Andrioff, and I live in District One. I'd first like to thank our police department. They're delegated with incredible difficult and unending tasks, responding to the massive homeless population we have in Oceanside. They do an amazing job, and we are very fortunate for your guys' work. I'm here tonight not because I want to be here, but it's because it's required of us to be here tonight. I've progressively watched as the transient population in our city has gotten worse and worse. This is what we have to witness every single day as we leave our neighborhood, of the San Luis Rey River and the conditions that it's been left in by this community. I'm just going to keep going with my speech as I go along here. It's time to end the narrative that these people are just on hard times and that need, that they need a helping hand. The people making their home in the riverbed are those with severe mental conditions, drug and alcohol addictions, and violent felony convictions. This is well documented by the KPBS in interviews with persons that used to reside in the canyon under County Cub Lane that was, uh, hydroaxed. One year later, that area and the canyon is still clear and transient free. However, we're still looking at this every single day because we can't get the Army Corps of Engineers to get in there and start clearing out this riverbed because of birds and bugs and whatever else. I believe now is the time that we begin to reassess the many social services that are offered to people who have no intention of becoming part of society. As long as we continue to feed and clothe these people and give them areas to live in, they're always going to be a problem. After talking with people and support services, it has become abundantly clear that the transients in the riverbed have no interest in responsibilities or getting sober or becoming any sort of productive member of society. What they want is to live their lawless lifestyle, which we are currently enabling. Up there is a picture of all the carts that have been removed thanks to city staff, which is costing part of that five million dollars that we can't seem to get the cost of living raised and increased for. So let's, uh, see what's in the transient trash. We're seeing needles in our neighborhoods, all over the area where people walk their dogs, where kids play. I mean, it's, it's, it's absolutely, it's, it's beyond ludicrous that we're putting up with this. Condoms, uh, soiled underwears. Let's see what else we got here. Police and activity, uh, this is a picture of a dead body that was just pulled out of the riverbed about a week or two ago. Of course, we always have police activity over there trying to do what they can with these residents, these outdoor residents. We're seeing murals left on our walls, homicide detectives going in and, and trying to figure out what's going on. Fires caused by the transients. This was from December, back when we had the fires raging throughout the riverbed coming from Bonzel. So people look to me and they say, Drew, how can you be so heartless? These are people too. And it's, you know, it's, it's really easy to take that viewpoint when they're not in your neighborhood, when you're not having to pick up the syringes and deal with all the biohazard waste that they leave behind. So to those people, I say, you know, if you care that much, let's, why don't you home them? That's where it starts, right? I'll get you, I'll get them an Uber. We can Uber them right to your house, and you can take care of them. But that's fine. You know what? If, if we need somebody to be the bad guy, I'm happy to play that role because I, I'll accept it for, for the greater good here. Our residents have been attacked by these people with their dogs. Continuously, we find knives, machetes, makeshift weapons around the trails in the riverbed, and this is all in proximity to the children who live in the area and travel to the Alex Road Skate Park. Alex Road Skate Park has become one of the most popular skate destinations in the county with kids skateboarding from all over the city to come to the park. Most of them are around nine to thirteen years old, and like myself at that age, we were allowed to skateboard and go around the city unsupervised with our friends. So my question is, what is it going to take? What is it going to finally motivate the city to take new action? We lost a slide there. The, the slide here was supposed to be Matthew. Matthew was murdered. He was a nine-year-old child, and he would have been twenty-nine years old today if it weren't for the absolute savage and senseless actions of drug-addicted transients who slit his throat without reason, provocation, or remorse in a beach bath in Oceanside. Excuse me. It was a murder that, at the time, absolutely rocked our city, yet seems two decades later, we have put this tragedy behind us and we're still coddling this transient community. This murder was so brutal that they didn't even give.
Can you please wrap it up?
We got one more sentence. They didn't even give his killer the, the death sentence because they wanted him to spend the rest of his natural life in prison. That, he, he later hung himself because he didn't want to do that time. So please don't make another family endure the horror that Matthew's family had to endure. It's time to stop catering to these drug addicts and felons, and it's time to get them out of the encampments for the good of our families, our friends, and our visitors of Oceanside. Thank you.
Okay, I was just asked that now that you got your clapping and applause out of the way, if you could hold your applause to the after the last speaker. Thank you.
It's pretty hard not to applause that one. Thank you so much. And I actually live, I'm Jim Hill. Thank you so much, Mayor, honorable members here of the council. I live in that area. I've got two girls of my own. We utilize the area. First, I want to start this off on a good note. I, I- on a good note. Oceanside is going in the right direction, with the exception of our homeless population. And Mr. Kern, we didn't mean to, you know, essentially applaud at that more homes, you know, will equal less homeless. That's incorrect. The applause are, you know, why we kind of went after that was, just because you have more homes doesn't mean you're going to get homeless off of the street, just like Drew was talking about over here, where, you know, Drew's actually talking about productive people, well, unproductive people of society that don't want to get back in. There are ten percent in there that want to get back into it, and by all means, every single one of us would probably help those people that want and need to get back in there. But as Oceanside, for me and a lot of people that we talk with, it's getting better. It's getting a lot better as far as development goes. I like development. I think it's doing fantastic. I grew up in Orange County. I moved down here because I thought there was a promise of, you know, Oceanside becoming a better place. I grew up near Huntington Beach. That place was not very nice at, you know, a certain part of time. I lived in Dana Point, same thing. San Clemente. What have they done? They've all turned it around. How did they do it? By a strong city council and making their schools better. Our schools are awful. Everybody knows that. My kids don't go to the local schools here. We actually go to a charter school that, you know, my wife and some others here in the audience have helped start. So we're doing this on our own. I'm kind of getting a little off track, but, you know, there's a lot that has to be said. This homeless population has to be dealt with. They are, they're a burden to us all, to you guys. For us to come and, you know, stay till eight-thirty at night, there were probably seven or eight of my neighbors that actually left because it took so long. But, you know, we understand. It's a process, right? Seeing that I only have about forty-five seconds left. Last year, my family and I, we took a ride down to the beach. And I do it by myself quite a bit to go surfing, but we did it last year. We looked around, and there weren't very many homeless counts. There were a couple of them. We just did this for Harbor Days, all, my whole family, four of us, riding down to the beach. Now, what you actually get from Bennett Road to the harbor smells like a urine factory in there, going all the way through there. Not only the urine factory, you can see all these tents, all these illegal areas that they are occupying. Do not trespass signs are about every five hundred feet or so. Anyway, I know my time's up, but let's do something about this. Let's not stop talking about this, and let's make Oceanside great. Thank you.
Gene O'Neill? I'm going in order. I don't know where yours is, but you're in the pile. Gene O'Neill.
Thank you to the city's council. I'll be brief. I would like to thank the Police Department and the hot team for the job that they're doing. Obviously, homelessness is a blight. Honor City uses a lot of resources. There's no panacea fix, and I think everybody knows that. However, I would employ you to look at any suggestions that might help in this area. One of the things that I think that might help would be some kind of a camera system, like a live internet, that puts a lot of these homeless in the areas they're using on camera. They don't want Big Brother around. Unfortunately, it has come to that. So I would employ you to look at all the possibilities that come before the council. And again, thank you to the Police Department. Thank you.
Our next four speakers are Donna McGinty, Nancy De La Hoya, Joe Corbett, and David Grove II.
I got lucky. I get to complain about this twice tonight. I'm spending some time now that I never thought I'd spend in my own home. In the morning, when the kids come by my house to go to school, to Mission Avenue, I'm out there watching the kids come down the sidewalk and making sure there's no transients in sight anywhere between my home and the Mesa Market. If there are, I take the kids across the street and tell them to go down the other side of the road to stay away from them and go to the light. And if they have a problem, go in the Mesa Market where they can be safe and the police will be called. And then I call the police and tell them that these people are there, and they do come and they do respond. The thing I'm concerned about is I'm seeing more and more. There's a tremendous problem in that riverbed, and it's moving up the hill. When the guys went down and cleaned up that riverbed last Saturday or Saturday before, they all moved up the hillsides up to the Mission Avenue area, and the minute the guys left, they came right back down the road, took over again. And like the chief says, there's an issue of trespassing that can be enforced. There are violations of trespassing. There's thievery involved, and all the grocery carts are worth, what, five hundred dollars apiece? There's a lot of theft involved there. There have been, I think there are about three deaths now that have occurred in just recent weeks in that area. And I see the drones are flying in the area now, and I'm very happy to see that being used because that's a, I hope they have night vision. If they do have night vision on those drones, they can see a lot of things that we know are there and we can't do anything about. And the police officers sure as heck have no business going in there in the nighttime and limited in the daytime. It's a rotten mess. It's down behind the Smart and Final. It's down behind the old Ralph's store. It's up and down Oceanside Boulevard. It's up and down Mission Avenue. And it's just, it's just, they're taking over. They're taking over our community. They're gangs that operate collectively like you folks do, making decisions and deciding who's going to get what for what. And that's the way it works out there. They're not going to go to a house to live. They don't want to be confined. They don't want to be told what to do, and they're not going to put up with it. They're not going to put up with it. They're going to exercise their rights to be out there, and they're going to take whatever they can get for as little or nothing as possible. And wherever they came from, they need to go back. We don't want them here. They need to go back. We don't want a child killed in this mess, and that's pretty scary.
Hi, my name is Nancy, and I live in the neighborhood there. Yeah, so one of the vagrants was walking through our neighborhood with his pit bull not leashed. His pit bull killed one of the little dogs in our neighborhood. An elderly lady was walking her dog. Kill that dog. We made police reports. Nothing really was done. I confronted the man myself and said, hey, we're going to get a warrant out for your arrest if I see you in this neighborhood again. So whatever we're doing here in the city, I feel is definitely not enough. We're having to take things into our own hands, putting our own lives at danger, trying to get these people out of our neighborhood. They're on our streets, in our neighborhood, walking around like it's, like they belong there, walking around the St. Louis River Bed, living there like they belong there. So, you know, I'm here to say something more needs to be done. What it is, I don't know. I moved to California two years ago, lived all over the country, all over the world, been to forty-five countries. I came to Oceanside. I said, oh, I think we finally found the place that where we're going to stay. We thought we bought our forever home, but nope. After seeing what the city has allowed to grow and foster, we decided we're getting the heck out of here. We're moving, and, you know, you're losing a dual income, each making six digits. Great taxpayers between the two of us. We got six college university degrees. So I feel like if you guys don't fix what you got here, you're going to lose a lot of folks who can afford to live here and who can afford to pay the taxes. And we're just going to, we're not going to live here. That's all I can say. But, you know, I feel bad for all the folks who are staying because this problem is, they're here because this is where they found the path of least resistance. So I don't know if you have to change your laws, enforce them, but they're here because this is the path of least resistance that they found. So I wish you the best of luck, and I thank you for your service and for your life energy and trying to make Oceanside better. But I feel like there's, step it up. It's not good enough. Thank you.
I'm Joe Corbett from Juana's View HOA. I wanted to do a quick shout-out. Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez, for always answering our emails and keeping us informed in what's going on. I'd also like to thank some other people from the city. Michelle Lawrence, the city manager, that man right there, Jim Ridenhour, and also Kirk Munt from Code Enforcement and Mola Shai from Oceanside Environmental. Okay, the fourteenth of March, myself and a fellow airport neighborhood in Orange County Fire Department Captain Kent Rundle came and spoke about all the problems we were seeing in the community, especially in the airport community. He gave you the kind of the answers to the task that, hey, this is what's going to happen, and it's actually what's happening now. Some of the things we put together in a sixteen-page document that we submitted to the city that carried some of our recommendations and concerns, and along with some possibilities to deal with the following, is to take efforts to evict and then deny transients from camping in Tulley Canyon in the San Luis Rey River in order to make our homes or nearby communities, the bike trails safer, and from threats of fire and crime, drugs, prostitution, other nefarious activities. We also asked them to look at the preservation of river habitat, coastal estuaries which dump onto our beaches and preserve our home property values. While the city's been open and honest, and we are more cognizant of the challenge they face, the bottom line is nothing's improved. It's only gotten worse, and it's, as Nancy said, it's festered. So none of those things we hit up back in March, as far as things we'd like to see happen, the transients have been able to happen. We understand the problems. A week ago, one of those pictures Drew, I sent Drew, he put on the slide. It was, I found right on our HOA walkway with needles, used feminine products, used underwear, things like that, just discarded in our HOA. That's the sidewalk. Kids walk on, ride their bikes, women with strollers, people walk their dogs, and things of that nature. I know I'm running out of time. So now we're dealing with overdoses, stabbings, murders, suicides, and discoveries of corpses. So our HOAs took a security on by ourselves. We now have a security patrol that goes two times a night, seven days a week, and that's something that we're going to deal with on our own end. Our main thing is the exploding transient population. Now that's in Tulley Canyon, where one dropped crack pipe with some onshore westerly winds, we're going to lose homes in our HOA like that with the brush. So we understand that the city is hamstrung by a lot of these issues, but something has to be done. The city's got to do the hard work to find out and unravel all the entities from Caltrans, San Diego Habitat for Conservancies, the city, and also the Army Corps of Engineers to find out. We got to get them out of there. It's just too much now, and people are sick of dealing it, and there's lots of people talking about taking things in their own hands. You know, I can't say anything more than it's already been said, and I've been holding a bathroom break since five o'clock because I can't get out in the break, and I'm really hungry and cold. So thank you very much.
David Grove? David Grove still here? Okay, move on to our next round of speakers. Nick Ritchie, Diane Nygaard, Dennis Martnik, and Ellen Bartlett.
If he called your name, please come down to the podium.
Good evening. My name's Nick Ritchie. I live at 133 Sherry Lane. Good evening to Mayor, council members and staff. I hope that it's okay with Zach. I'm going to kind of change my topic. My topic was to discuss the strand and its lack of maintenance and so forth and so on. And I think that, I was very surprised by the focus on our transient chronic homeless situation, our transient drug users. I live in South O. I live a Los Salinas mobile village. I've had my home burglarized. I've had neighbors attacked and bitten. Condoms, I didn't think I was going to talk about this. This wasn't even what I was going to talk about, but with all these folks, it's just amazing. But I'm well aware of how we've got here. I know what you guys are going through. Prop 47, Martin versus Boise. I mean, all the stuff that has come down the pike, the ACLU. I mean, they've even got their, homeless has their own even federal advocate. I mean, it's just gone off the rails. People keep on talking about what we should do, and I really think that you guys are trying to do the best that you can. But I would recommend this, is that you put together a blue-ribbon group of citizens, concerned citizens, law enforcement, and whoever else that can come, and the churches as well, because they're kind of all over the place about how they are to help people. Because as one of the speakers spoke, most of what we see is enablement for people that continue to go and live unredeemed, unproductive lives. They don't return with the rest of us. And we want them to do that. That's ultimately what we all want to do, is all of the money that's being spent by EMTs and the units, every single call in Oceanside, well, not every single in South O, eighty percent is to chronic substance abusers. PD, almost anecdotally, and the records I've gotten from Chuck Lawrie's office as well, almost a hundred percent of all the PD calls in South O, the beach area, are for transient chronic substance abusers. And that's just got to stop because we, the people, are funding this, we get absolutely nothing. We don't even get restored human beings. So we've got to come up with a new way to do this. I really believe that San Diego, City San Diego is doing it completely wrong. We need some new ideas. I'm sure that Chris Megason, that the city has worked with, with the new unit that's opening up, you know, from Solutions With Change, would be more than happy to come and chair it, inject some new ideas into that, or anybody from Alpha Project, any of those folks, and citizens come together, and we come together with an idea, and let's do something new to help this situation in our city. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calavera. And I actually came here tonight to rebut what I expected the BIA would be saying in their comments, and after sitting here for three and a half hours, I learned that that was canceled this evening. But I think there are a number of things that have come up tonight where there's perhaps time to connect some dots. I'm thinking of comments that Greg Anglia made at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, that the primary solution to homelessness is providing homes. And that certainly is not going to address all the problem with these chronic problem people. But for many people, it's a transient condition, and it's providing homes. What I've heard the BIA say other places is that we need to build thousands of new homes in this region. It's not just building more homes. It's affordable housing. And that means both the cost of the housing, and it means the income level for the people. And both of those issues need to be addressed, and both of them are issues here for us in Oceanside. We need more affordable housing. As was said earlier, we need more jobs, and we need more well-paying jobs. And I think things that are particularly concerned about folks when we see things like our rivers and our parks impacted by these issues, those things are critical to our quality of life, protecting parks and open space. And must I also mention, we all like to eat and farmland. And that's part of why me and many thousands of other people in this community support Yes on Why. It's an opportunity for us to protect some of the things that are important for our community, to give the people a voice on making the changes that will impact our quality of life, and connecting some of these dots on issues we've heard here tonight. Yes on Why. Thank you.
Dennis Martnik, supporter of the Yes on Why, which is the SOAR initiative. You heard earlier tonight that at least eighty percent, and it's a higher figure than that, of those people living in the agricultural area want to continue farming. Agritourism will help. It will be beneficial for those people who want to continue. Regrettably, there are a small number of farmers who don't want to go through the transition and look at new crops, looking at grapes, looking at alternative means. Those people have been joined with North River Farms, a developer, and the building industry, and they've received... industry, and they've received over $475,000 this last week in order to carry on a campaign against Measure Y. Measure Y would preserve our agriculture and our open space. I support, I strongly support affordable housing, but if you build it in the wrong place, you're going to cost the city much more money in the long run. Smart growth is a, is a proven concept. The Sand Egg, Sand Egg has supported it. Our city planners go by it. If you build according to smart growth, you'll be able to get the affordable housing. You'll help your homeless. Homelessness is, has many problems. It, it's not only drugs. That is a part of it, but it's also mental illness. It's also economics. If you build in the wrong place, you will not have the funds in the future to deal with these issues. If you look at the report that was done, that was commissioned by the city council with regards to the SOAR initiative, you'll see that it supports our concept of preserving agriculture. If you look, for example, at number one, it is that Nadal, Nadelson Dole Group Report that said that SOAR would have no measurable impact on housing development in the city. Number two says, Oceanside will be able to accommodate all future development through 2050 on remaining vacant land without converting agricultural or park and open space. Number three, the housing element further takes the position that conversion of agricultural areas to high-density residential would not be consistent with smart growth planning principles. Four, it is TNDG's conclusion that SOAR would not impact net funding for infrastructure. And the last one, the city's focus on agritourism would potentially be enhanced by the proposed SOAR initiative. We want to preserve our agriculture. You don't have to give it up to accommodate affordable housing. Thank you.
My name is Ellen Bartlett and, good evening to the Mayor and city council members. I'm a longtime Oceanside resident and I'm also a retired science teacher from Oceanside High School. And I first wanted to congratulate our city for receiving the Platinum Level Beacon Spotlight Award for Sustainability Practices at the League of California Cities Annual Conference. And I recently attended a workshop on composting at the city, which I was, absolutely wonderful. I believe that our wonderful city needs to begin working towards a Platinum Level Beacon Award in greenhouse gas reductions and energy efficiency as well, which brings me to why I'm here today. California state law established a process that allows for local adoption of building energy standards that are more stringent than the statewide standards. These are often referred to as REACH codes. Now, many cities across the state have already demonstrated their climate leadership by adopting REACH codes. Several cities are currently working with the statewide codes and standard team to develop a REACH code to reduce our dependency on fossil fuel appliances. As you may know, gas water heaters and gas furnaces account for about 50% of the carbon footprint of our homes and buildings and it would prevent Oceanside and the state from achieving our climate goals. I would like to ask that Oceanside start to work with the statewide codes and standards team to develop REACH codes that can be considered for adoption by our city in 2019. This would give Oceanside the opportunity to play a leadership role in San Diego County. REACH codes are a long-term strategy to eventually get to zero-carbon buildings. What must be done for our city to move forward is two things I'm asking the city council to do. First of all, to send staff to the October 20, 23th REACH code workshop in San Diego. It only runs from 9:00 in the morning till 12:30. And second, to direct staff to email the statewide codes and standards team to have Oceanside be included in the free of charge of cost-effectiveness study on building decarbonation REACH codes. Neither of these actions is an actual, is a sign of a commitment to REACH code, but it will be a really outstanding opportunity so Oceanside can make an informed decision based on economic analysis down the road. I'm here tonight to urge you to do what's best economically and environmentally for our city and also for future generations. How many of you have children or grandchildren that live in Oceanside? I do. My grandson is five-years-old. He just started kindergarten here in Oceanside and I want him to grow up and enjoy the benefits of our wonderful city. I can just say, I can email everybody information about where you can send your emails to, to the city and I'll, I can email that information to the council members and the mayor.
Thank you so much. No further public on this item.
With that, is there any general council member comments? Saying none, then we will adjourn to 3:30, October 17th.